Okay, I call this meeting of the Mount Vernon Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a form of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. At this time, we need a motion to certify the agenda. Motion's made by Robert, second by Scott, all four. That's six oh. Let the record show, Josh Jordan is not present at this time. And at this time, Mr. Robert Taylor believes that they left our in our prayers.
I'm glad you guys. Lord, we come today thanking you for all your mercy and grace and the many blessings that you give us on a daily basis. And Lord, as we draw a close to this first semester, let us remember the reason for this holiday time. I ask you to be with everyone as we have a break from school and I pray that everyone will have a Merry Christmas and a safe and prosperous new year and return with new refreshed energy to finish out the school year. Now, enter our hearts and minds as we make decisions on the business before us today and if those decisions will have a positive impact on our district. For yours is where we fall short your glory and for us to be a line of others. These things we ask in your son's holy name. Amen.
James, we are good, right? Sorry about not checking. All right, so we have Cody Clinton and Connor McCurdy to lead us in our pledges.
Guys, y'all come here to the bill.
Come right here and we'll start with our American flag and then we'll go to our Texas flag. They are out of order, right? Is that right? So, I don't think the flags are in the right order. Just let y'all know that my vote for not checking. Get it, guys?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, united, indivisible.
All right, you guys.
Good luck in your game.
We got some special practitioners to say thank you to.
All right, this time we recognize our Teachers of the Month and our Campus Support Member of the Month. So if I could first have Ms. Allison Higgins to come down. Ms. Allison is our Elementary Teacher of the Month and this is what her campus had to say about her. Ms. Higgins is a new addition to our campus this year and such a blessing to our students and staff alike. She exemplifies leadership by working collaboratively with her colleagues by sharing ideas during PLCs and being willing to try something new. Allison is dedicated to the profession and actively seeks professional development to improve her practice. With the new star redesigned, she has assisted her entire team in helping support student constructive responses. Her strong classroom management, positive rapport with students, and excellent communication help maximize learning in the classroom and promote high levels of student achievement. In addition, she demonstrates strong professionalism and she has perfect attendance for the year. However, most importantly, she builds a classroom community of learners and demonstrates concern and compassion for her students every day. Ms. Higgins is a game changer. So, all right, let me get Teacher of the Month, Ms. Allison Higgins. Miss Justin, can we get it?
Got it.
A couple pictures here.
Are we right?
There we go.
There we go.
Great. You want to say anything?
I appreciate it. I'm very honored. Thank you. My family would love to be here with my two sick kiddos, so yeah.
Well, thank you for that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
There you go.
When we get done too, we'll take a picture of all of y'all together.
Our middle school Teacher of the Month could not be here and so I'm gonna say reading what her deals will honor her in the January board meeting. But our December Middle School Teacher of the Month is Ms. Erica Marker and she is at a ballgame right now coaching. So, we will honor her tomorrow in her class in front of students but we'll honor her here in January as well. Next is our High School Teacher of the Month. If I could have Ms. Andrea Reynolds come forward, please. This is what her campus had to say about her. It says, "Ms. Reynolds has had an instantaneous and substantial impact on our campus since coming to Mount Vernon High School for the 22-23 school year. Her work ethic is off the charts as she puts considerable time and effort into the planning lessons and knowing her students' strengths and weaknesses. The planning and preparation payoff for our students as high-quality instruction is delivered to them every day in Ms. Reynolds' Algebra I classes. You won't find time being wasted in our classes as students are always engaged in the curriculum. She consistently goes above and beyond of what is expected of her. For example, she has taken it upon herself to set up daily Zoom conferences with her AEP students so that they will be able to receive the same quality instruction as their classmates and remain engaged in the actual classroom. Ms. Reynolds makes it a point to push all students to achieve at the highest possible levels. In addition to being a great teacher in the classroom, she handles the other nuances of the job effectively and efficiently. She can be counted on to do things correctly and on time. She has a tremendous asset to the math team and she is always willing to collaborate and share ideas that will help her entire department improve. In addition to all these things, Ms. Reynolds has been instrumental in helping to build a positive campus morale. She has a positive attitude with her students and her other staff members and works hard to make Mount Vernon High School the very best it can be. You will see Ms. Reynolds support students with their extracurriculars and any other activities they are involved in. We look forward to seeing the great things our students will accomplish due to her influence and she is more than worthy to be recognized as our Teacher of the Month, Ms. Andrea Reynolds." You get a picture? Nope, there she is.
Somebody get a picture.
One more? Anything you wanna say?
I just wanna say thank you. It's been, it was a little rocky start for me at the beginning of the year but I had so much support here at the high school and I very much appreciate my principals and my coworkers and they make it easier on me. So, I'm very thankful.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. I'm correct if I'm wrong but I think Ms. Higgins and Ms. Reynolds both are graduates of Mount Vernon ISD. Is that correct? So, we're excited. They're, this is, they're, both of their first years back to Mount Vernon and on staff and we are super excited that y'all are here and thank you for what you're doing for our students and we greatly appreciate you very much.
It's a great place to work.
All right, now, if I could have Ms. Isabel Garcia to come forward, please? She is our Junior Teacher of the Month, Teacher of the Month. This is what her campus says. Says, "She is one of the real superstars of Mount Vernon High School. There is not a harder worker or more dependable work to be found anywhere at the school. She is always running, sometimes literally, from place to place making sure that her students are taken care of and that she handles all her responsibilities in a timely and efficient manner. Her work ethic is evidence of the pride she takes in her role as ESL support and the love she has for those students. She works hard to form great relationships with her ESL students and the respect and admiration they have for her is evident. It doesn't matter how much or how often things change or if she is asked to adjust, she just goes with the flow and keeps doing awesome work. Teachers at and in another staff hold her in high regard to her work ethic, intelligence, and dependability. Ms. Garcia will do anything that is asked of her and always does it with a smile and 100% effort. You will never hear a negative word from Ms. Garcia as she is always willing to do what is in the best interest of the school. Although the job may go unnoticed by some, all the staff at Mount Vernon High School know and appreciate what a great job she is doing for our school and our students. Ms. Garcia is absolutely worthy recognition of Staffing for the Month, If we had the other two come back up, we'll take a little group picture.
Can I get y'all switch in the back? I like to see everyone's face. There we go. I got everyone lined up. One, two, and three.
Okay, one more.
Did you get laid up lately?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all gonna do those glasses, Leanne? Next item of business, consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, there are enough comments. Anybody sign it? Sign it if you still have your paper? Okay, on to the next one here. Consent agenda. Any questions for Dr. Mattella on that? Okay, if there's no questions on the consent agenda, need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. That's made by Leanne.
Second.
Second by Linda. All four. That is six. All right, this time we'll have our public hearing. 2020, 2021 Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas Report. Ms. Pam?
Yes. The time of year again, we've got our first rating. This is our 21-22 rating but it's based on our year 2021 data and as has been in the past, we received a superior rating this year but we had a perfect score, 100 out of the possible 100. Not a whole lot to talk about.
We did what we were supposed to do.
Yeah. Anyway, got a really good staff and they pay a lot of attention to the details and so that's, I'm really appreciative. We have a good staff in our office. Attached to your first rating is also the disclosures that were required to make and unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Pam?
We ran it in the paper as is required and to make a notice of this meeting.
What did we get last year? We didn't get 100?
I think it was like a 97.
First time that I've looked back that I know that we've gotten 100.
Yeah, it's been in the upper 90 since I've been here but...
Like you're 20-something in a row of superior but the first time that I've been able to see that it's got a perfect 100.
Awesome.
Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Pam.
That's what we're shooting for. All right, so time for our action items. First action item, consider and approve the independent audit report as presented by Rutherford and Taylor and Company.
Mr. President, we have Michael Taylor with Rutherford, Taylor and Company who's gonna present our audit report tonight.
Nothing. Is it Mr. Lake that's been here?
Yes, sir.
Lots of years?
Lots of years.
Good to have you face.
You face.
If you need to use the podium, that's fine.
If you walk in here, if I can stand up here and walk around, I've done this like 44 years.
What actually comfortable do you get, sir?
I just walking around. The report is 75 pages in length. I'll be happy to go over all 75 pages and explain them or I can do the reader's side just partially. But I'm at the pleasure of the board. We work for the board.
Yeah, we'll go through the ladder.
On page three is a very important schedule in the audit report. This is just a fifth of the board. Board approved the audit as presented. Ms. Sol signed on several copies to give to Ms. Pam and then she has a blank form because we have the PDF. This is in the PDA. They no longer accept physical copies. It's electronic filed. That's to file over a certain time or you'll fail the part of school. Oh, page five is the independent audit report, our report. Second paragraph, it's been changed up again. "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above in the first paragraph present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the Mount Vernon School District as of August 31, 22." In other words, an unmodified opinion, the best opinion an auditor can give on a set of financial statements. You have a good set of financial statements. I was talking in the office and they told me that Ms. Pam may be the best one that they get to work with and they, we audit 42 independent school districts so we get the same audit. So, page eight. I'll go over, I already told y'all this but when I first started, PDA had, I think it was 52 staff auditors assigned at Austin and they went out all the time with finances. Last time we talked, I talked down there, they had two on staff. What they've done is they've shifted the calls to the district level for the independent auditors to check about 45 to 50 compliance audits on the district. That's what's happened over the years. And I'm happy to say from page eight that the very last sentence, "The results of our test disclose no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under governmental audit standards." And if you'll turn over to page 13, there's one word. That's always what I like to say when I review. The word is none. So, there is no findings or question讨. Turning over to page 17, this is the empty and eighth section of the audit report. I'll go over the financial highlights up at the very top of page 17. "The district's total combined net position net worth was 12.7 million on August 31, 22." During the year, the next bullet, "The district's expenses were 2.4 million less than the 22.5 million generated in taxes and other revenues for the governmental activities." The fourth bullet, "The general fund reported its fund balance this year of 8.3 million, an increase of $1,355,000." And of course, the last bullet, "The district should know new debt during this year." Turning over to page 19, that was the bottom where we talked about changes in net position. "The district's total revenues were 22.4 million. 35% comes from state aid, federal grants. 62% comes from local property taxes. The total cost of all programs and services was $20 million and of this $20 million, 54 cents of every dollar was spent in classroom instruction, instruction to children in this district." A very good ratio. Very good ratio. Last one, "The district's tax collection percentage rate. When you compare base tax, current and the linked one to the levy, it's 100.29% and then when we add penalties and interest to the taxes collected to the current year levy, 101.43% collected." Good collection percentage. Good collection percentage. I'm really gonna turn to the pages now. Is that all right? Let's turn over to page 30, ZC3. This is the standard revenues and expenditures and change in fund balance for governmental funds. This is the page that you'll see published in the local paper to notify the taxpayers of just how the money was raised and how it was spent and this is because of the Texas Property Tax Code requirement of it, by the PDA, the Texas Property Tax Code. And let's look at the general fund. "Revenues are broken down by the three sources, local, state, and federal. Local 11.8, state nearly 4 billion. Total revenue 16.5. Expenditures, as you can see, those are broken down by function area. Function, and I talked about it a few minutes ago, 54 cents of every dollar was spent classroom instruction. Function 11, 12, and 13 is your classroom instruction and as you can see, about $8.1 million spent in classroom instruction. One thing I always like to point out to the board is come down to function 51 that says plant maintenance and operations, That's what it costs to heat, cool, maintain all the district's facilities for the year. Takes a lot of money for a school. And of course, coming on down, you see the changes in fund balance are net revenue, $1,355,000. Beginning fund balance, $6,959,000. Ending fund balance, $8.3 million. A very good fund balance."
Talking about that on this school first rating, if you, is it two and a half months we're supposed to have?
No less than two and a half.
No less than two and a half.
So, if we spent $70 million on something out of fund balance, we wouldn't get that school first rating because, so what do we, about what is that? We spend about a million and a quarter a month salary?
Oh, yeah. We would need to keep somewhere in the four to five million.
Sometimes we transparent when, you know, people say y'all got $18 million in the bank but we have to keep.
At a minimum, maybe 4.5. It's a minimum. And what people don't understand sometimes is that if you don't have any fund balance, what you'll have to do at the first of the, as the year starts breaking up and certainly at the test of this, the bulk of the expenditures except for teacher salaries start in the first two or three months of the year. Ordering supplies, they're all coming in, they gotta be paid for. And if you don't have a reserve, then you're gonna have to borrow money to pay for those things till the property taxes start coming in. And the bulk of property taxes coming in late December or in January, that'll take y'all off our discount award. By early payment. About most districts. So, you gotta have a reserve to cover all those upfront expenditures or you're gonna have to borrow money and then pay it. So, it takes money. On page 37 is notes to the financial statements. I think there's something like 40 pages of notes where we just drill down, drill down and explain more and explain more. And I always say, if you have trouble going to sleep at night, start reading these notes and probably by the third page you'll be down to sleep. And if not, by the time you get to the pitching note which is 10 pages in length, you'll be sound asleep. Turning on over to page 61. We talked about the general fund. What here now is the general fund with the budget they actually just talked about and the variance to the far right. The first column is the original budget that the district passed back in August, got the gas at the local cost of running. The second column is final with all the budget amendments made throughout the year. Third column's actual and the fourth column is the variance. You had budget to come in, the fund balance of $131,000, $132,000 and I bet the third line was mine. Actual was $1,355,000 so you were $1,223,000 better than what you thought you would be. And the bulk of that was stated. They came in at the end. And that's one of those ad agencies. Another schedule I always point out for the district, on page 68. This is Schedule of Delegated Taxes that are still open in the district. It's broken down by taxable year and the year ended which is the next year on a 10-year spread. And as you can see, $631,435 is still open in the district. Of course, there, whenever they pay them, they're gonna pay attorney fees, penalties, and interest.
And they'll pay them, I guess they just repossess?
They should, yes, sir. Delegated tax attorneys will try whatever they can. Well, page 74 and page 75, basically page 74, is the schedule expenditure of federal awards and as you can see, the district spent federal awards, $4.3 million. But what I like to point out to the board is every one of those lines you see, either the business office has to file a report every month or has to file a report every quarter. You talk about some activity going on. It's right here on this page to generate this money. And of course, Washington wants all their bank they can get because if you look at the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the food commodities that they distribute to the district, we have to show that as a value so they can get credit for that. Mr. Sanders, that completes a very brief presentation of the audit report.
We're proud of that 100.
Yes, sir. And the first indicators, we've got them filled out here to go with PDA. Where you should have a yes, you have a yes. Where you should have a no, you have a no. As far as auditors are concerned, you got them.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Taylor?
Thank you so much.
Well, and I'd be very missed on behalf of our team if I didn't, first of all, thank the Mount Vernon Independent School District. Second of all, for the professionalism by Pam and her staff. I know we're auditors. We come in, we ask for stuff. We're like tornadoes. But we always ask if they'd like for us to put it back and they always, for some reason, say no. But it's a very professional staff. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for what y'all did and thank you for working through the district. Yes, sir.
Very much. And Pam, tell your folks thanks. Y'all are a blessing to us. That's a, we wouldn't sit here and talk about it but that's a big deal. I thank y'all for getting by in one bathroom in the administration office. Need to approve the independent audit report as presented. Need a motion for that. Motion's made by Robert. I second. All four. That's six oh. And your Taylor, thank you for that. Where have you got to drive back to?
Oh, I'm going to Yanis.
You're going to Yanis?
Oh, St. Nick Yanis. Okay.
But at least I didn't have to go to Popsport.
You wanna sign that real quick?
Yep.
We can do it.
Okay. We just have one copy or do we need more than that?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Be safe. Except you as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item seven, information items. A, enrollment totals.
Information out of my house, that isn't enrollment. We are maintaining right at 1576, which is where we were as of November the 1st as well, which is still 50 students above where we were this time last year. So, good times.
Okay. Hallelujah, Daddy. Cam? Campus department updates?
I'm gonna give those to them.
As Bill and Tara.
Okay, and I know you got us talking about enrollment, but I kinda wanna talk about attendance. The last time that we met, our attendance rate was ninety-five point four percent, and it has gone down. So it is ninety-four point ninety-three percent. The last two weeks, we've had about sixty, almost eighty kids out every day. And the flu has hit us really hard. I mean, my own personal child has had fever for six days, so it's, it's really a tough strand. So we're hoping to improve that once we get out of this little bug that we've got going on. So, kind of breaking it down by grade level, our early childhood special education, our E S C E class, they're at eighty-five percent attendance. Our pre-K is at eighty-eight percent. Kinder first are ninety-four, and then our second, third, and fourth are holding at ninety-five. Just in case you guys wanted to know that. So, and look at our performance goals. Some of the things that we've done for professional development for our staff is, here recently, we've had our Reading Horizons, which is our phonics curriculum. We've had our, the trainers on campus, and they've been giving, they've been modeling and giving job embedded professional development, so coaching for our, especially our new teachers. We had several new teachers that are familiar with the program. So they've been giving feedback and coaching them. We had several teachers, third and fourth, go to our Star Redesign Training. We're working on writing and vertical alignment across the grade levels, along with writing across the content areas, which is really important with the new Star Redesign and the constructive responses. So, one of the things-
You say Star Redesign? Is that what we learned about that amount?
Yes, our Star Redesign.
Thanks to the fans for all this.
So, one of the things that we've been doing, but when we come back in January, that we're really gonna focus on is our planning protocol and making sure all our grade levels are following that. We have it specifically laid out for all grade levels, like what we're supposed to do prior to the unit, during the unit, and after the unit. And we're really going to just make sure that we're facilitating that progress, that process, and starting with backwards design, starting with the end demand. So what that looks like is, talk about what students are supposed to learn, how are we gonna know when we learn it? They're gonna build their CUAs collaboratively in edigoria. And CUAs, I know Mr. Blair talked about that, that's just our common unit assessment, it's what we give after every unit. And so we're gonna do that first, so that the teachers, you know, really know where the students should be, what they should know. Then we're gonna start targeting planning. Now, these are things that we have had in place, but we're just going to really hold everyone accountable for that. Look at the specificity of the standards and plan, not just our whole group, but our stations and enrichment. And then afterwards, analyze data. And we're really doing good about that, but one of the things that we've gotta work on is, we look at our lowest performing standards and we reteach those, but actually spiraling those back into the common unit assessments. That's a piece that we've really gotta focus on, because we're not reassessing that. We're just doing it kind of informally, but we're not doing it edigoria. And learning walks, that's something that all our staff members will have completed one by the end of this semester, so they're responsible for doing one a semester. And that's where they're going into other classrooms and observing other teachers. So they may come and say, hey, I wanna know more about classroom management, and so we'll talk about what they wanna see, and we'll set up a time for them to go and observe that strategy in another classroom. For our walkthroughs, we've been, the admin, we've been planning walkthroughs, walkthrough cycles, and soon now, we've made a goal to walk through every teacher's room for the first week in December and just leave a handwritten note with positive affirmations, and we did do that. Our GT students, what's new for them is, this is really neat, but they created a game board. So they've all created a board game, and they submitted it to Milton Bradley. So I just wanna let you know about that. And for our campus cultural goal, it seems to be improving just based on teacher feedback. We have seventy-four staff members attending our Christmas party after school, so I think that speaks for itself, that many people are willing to come after school to eat dinner together. And we're still working on our quarterly morale boosters. We've done the staff retreat for the beginning of the year, room service. Here lately, we've done a holiday game show, and that's just been a big hoot. Everybody's ready to spin the wheel and see what their challenge is or their prize. And we're continuing to try to build positive home partnerships, keeping up with that positive contacts from staff, and we're holding them accountable to that as well. Parents are encouraged to participate in all our after-school events, class parties and field trips, and we're working on improving communication with our newsletters and messenger. As far as safety, we're conducting our drills every month, and we're giving Max our feedback. Teachers are doing a really good job reporting what they see. Do not linger around the playgrounds with your phones out, because we'll come check you out. One thing that we are a little worried about and how we're gonna handle is Friday's Christmas parties. We know that we're anticipating about three hundred and fifty plus parents there, and requiring them to bring their ID and scanning them, giving them a visitor badge. We're worried, we're worried about the time and the patience of the adults. So, that is one thing that we'll have to kinda learn from, from these Christmas parties. And then we have Mr. Blair, and I know the other CIS, people are really working hard to provide our families with Christmas. They've been working nonstop on our Christmas store.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We all agree to keep it three minutes, so.
You agree?
Yes.
Glover, you have your minute?
I got it.
We've been giving you a hard time.
Okay, we'll see.
All right, first, I wanted to talk about attendance. We have had the similar flu. It's, it's at ninety-four point eight-nine, so it's lower than absolutely what we want. Not much we can do about it other than try to keep disinfecting and keep trying to keep our kids healthier. We, I, the biggest thing I have for you tonight is that I wanted to go over a little bit about our UIL academics that we did this, this past couple of days, our week. And I'm so excited, we received first place. Very excited about that. Our students did amazing, our teachers and coaches that coached all the, each individual meant just did amazing. They worked really hard all semester. I think we have a total of six hundred and, we had a total of six hundred and ninety-one point eighty-five points. Second place, which was Whitman, had six hundred and twelve point three. So quite a bit, quite, quite an accomplishment. Very proud of our kids, very proud of our staff. They just did amazing. I think we would have just blown it out of the park had we had more students. We've had a lot of students that, as they saw other kids doing practices, they wanted to get into it, but it was a little too late. It was the last week or two. So I think next year, just like this year, it's gonna improve even more, and I'm really looking forward to it, and the teachers are very excited. That's, that's the big news. We have also been doing a lot of, we have the twelve Days of Christmas, you know, to help boost the morale, and lots of little, we've had ornament exchanges and cookie exchanges and things like that, just fun things. And staff have been really talking about how great they think things are moving in the right direction, and, you know, they seem to be quite pleased with the direction things are going. So I think that's a much needed improvement. We have a lot of really great things going on with our RTI and things that I mentioned each time. It's just so exciting because we, to see those kids that, that walk into an intervention class and come out feeling like, oh, you know, that really helped. And they're very vocal about it, they're vocal about it with their teachers as well. So it's, it's an extremely exciting, exciting time. Biggest thing is, I'm so excited about the academics. Teachers cannot think of a time, they don't remember the last time that we got first place in district, so it's very exciting. Thank y'all.
This word is, I think Ms. Sewell has a big surgery Thursday, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If we could give a little information on that, we'd pray for her.
And Ms. Dinsen went through hers, I apologize. She went through hers last week, she's doing very well. She said she's sore, but she's doing very well. And Ms. Reese went through one as well, and she says she's doing well. It's awesome.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everybody. First thing I wanna say is just, it's been, I think it's been a really good semester, you know, been a lot of good work going on this year by our teachers. As good as I can remember in my, and I say that genuinely, as good as I can remember in the seven years that I've been here, just the level of instruction that's taken place across the campus, it's really been good this year. So, so we're proud of that, and I think we're gonna see a lot of good results from that as we move forward. Last week, we did our Star E O C retakes, that was for the kids that weren't successful in the spring, and so we don't have, obviously, we don't have the results of that yet, but, you know, a shout out to our House Bill forty-five, forty-five teachers, which we won't go into. They're the ones that have to go in and do that intervention on a daily basis during leave time, we call it leave time, with kids who weren't successful in that. So those teachers, you know, essentially, they're teaching an extra class during the day, so shout out to them for doing that, and we'll see, we'll see what the results are in a few weeks, but I know that a lot of them worked really hard on that, and so we'll see what the, what the outcomes are. Speaking of that, a little bit, Nazra kinda touched on it about the new item types and the Star redesign. Last week, we did a training, Ms. Wilkins actually did the training, but it was all the core content teachers came in, and we showed them how to get on the new platform and how to access the new item type, so we talked about how when we get back from Christmas break, we're gonna, we're gonna figure out exactly how we're going to, without using mandate, how we're going to implement that into the classroom, so that these kids will have experience getting onto the new platform as they get ready for the new STAR test coming up in May. So we'll be implementing that, the results of that training when we get back up from the break. And again, it's just about teaching kids how to use the program and seeing those different types of questions that they're not used to seeing. We wanna have, we want them to have plenty of time to practice that before the actual test gets here. So that's coming up soon. Just a couple of content-specific things that, that we're, that we're seeing right now. All of our English, this English one through four, they're all at the point in their curriculum, and that's the teacher resource system, where they're really focusing on essay writing across the board. So our English teachers and kids have been doing a lot of research and essays in the last couple of weeks, and of course, as you guys know, that's a huge push that we need to have district-wide, so we're seeing a lot of good things there. Our junior English teacher, Ms. Bernal, she's really focusing on that essay writing for the T S I. As, as another thing y'all know, that we, we started a few years ago measuring student outcomes on T S I. In other words, what percentage of our graduating seniors are being successful on the reading T S I and the math T S I? So she's really pushing that this year, doing a great job with it. Math team, met with them yesterday, or not yesterday, it was up to the weekend, but last Thursday, I believe it was, and we just kinda talked about the math T S I and how we could kinda continue to see some gains there, just throwing numbers at you. But last year, our seniors that graduated, thirty-three percent of them had met math T S I, and that was up from seventeen percent the year before. So we are starting to see some gains there, but one of the things that the math teachers wanted to do is start testing sophomores on math T S I than the year of seven juniors. The reason they wanna do that is because it's more aligned to Algebra I and geometry, so that is, those kids immediately coming out of Algebra I and geometry, they should be more prepared to take that math part of the T S I. So we're gonna look at that, at doing that this year with sophomores, probably in April, rather than juniors, which we've done in the past. So there's a little shift there. I wanna briefly touch on our PSAT results. Some of you sitting here have kids that took the PSAT, so you know what I'm talking about, but it's basically a, it's a primer for the SAT or the ACT, kind of an indicator of how students might perform on that. There's also some scholarship opportunities tied to it. But we had twenty-nine of our kids take it this year, and I just wanted to kinda give you the numbers here. This is a test that scored, scored from three hundred something to fifteen twenty, I believe, with the national average being a nine twenty. The third, the twenty-nine kids that we had tested, test the PSAT, eighty-three percent of them were above the national average. So that was very, very good. We're just kinda comparing this to previous years when we've done this, and we was well ahead of the curve of what we have been in the past. Sixty-two percent of those twenty-nine were above one thousand, and then seventeen percent were eleven forty, all the way up to thirteen forty. So some very good scores on that PSA, PSAT test that came back recently, so that was a big plus. Seniors are gonna be doing their CPR certification, that's now a graduation requirement, so Ms. Decker's gonna be starting that with seniors this week, and we'll continue to have in small groups throughout the next couple of months to get that taken care of. And I know I went way past my three minutes now, but I'm gonna finish. CTE, a couple of things I wanna call out there. Our floral design class last week, we had forty-four kids there that took the, read this, I don't get it wrong, the Texas Floral Knowledge Base Exam, and that gives them a TSFA Floral Knowledge Certificate. So we had ninety-one percent, forty out of forty-four that passed that, and that makes them eligible to take the practicum, not the practicum, but the hands-on portion of that next semester. So they will come out with a floral certification that will make them immediately eligible or, or employable in a, in that type of setting when they graduate. So I was talking to Ms. Derek today about it, she said, yes, if you have that certification, then it's easy to go out of here, especially in a seasonal time, just to grab a job with florists, and so, so it's a pretty good thing. So we got at least forty kids there that are probably gonna get that fully certified by the end of the year. Let's see, AG LDE teams, they, they wrapped up their stuff. You probably may have heard of this, but we have one student who finished third in the state in Spanish creed speaking, that was Betsy Tobor. There were eight hundred and fifteen FFA chapters competing across the state, and she was third. So that was amazing for her, so. And then lastly, TAPPI, Texas Association of Future Educators, Ms. Ballou has taken over that this year, and she's done a great job. I don't know if y'all remember, last year, we had the one group that made it all the way to nationals in Washington, D.C. But she's got, she has eleven, she had eleven students that went to the area competition in Tyler last week, and of those, we have three teams that are gonna go to the state competition in three different events. So again, they're doing some great stuff in our clubs and organizations, and that's just a snapshot of it. Any questions?
All right, thank you. So at this time, six oh four PM, board will convene in the closed session for personnel personnel, Texas Governor Code five five one oh seven four. Kevin, keep me in.
Yep.
Board convenes back into open session. Is there any further business, any resignations or?
There are not, we don't have any professional contracts recommended at this month, for president, or any resignation, so there's nothing in regard to personnel report.
Okay, any further business? This meeting is adjourned at seven fifty.